You ready, Mel? I call to order the redevelopment agency meeting of December 20th, 2017. The first item of business is to approve the minutes of November 8th, 2017, and December 6th, 2017, as presented. Board Member Nichols.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member Nichols, a second by Board Member Burton. Discussion of the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Jacob?
Yes.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member Newton?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Business item 2B, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution Number 205, approving the 2018 annual meeting schedule for the City of West Jordan Redevelopment Agency. Melanie?
This is just basically a housekeeping guideline that needs to be done at the end of each calendar year to adopt the upcoming meeting schedule for our official boards of the city, City Council Planning Commission. And as you well know, the RDA, MBA, and Fairway Estates, they hold them as needed. So it's just we're following state code statute.
Board Member Nichols? Move to approve Resolution 205. Second. We have a motion by Board Member Nichols, a second by Board Member Anderson. Discussion of the motion. Let's vote.
Board Member Newton?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Jacob?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Business item 2C, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution Number 206, authorizing the chair to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement with the City of West Jordan for municipal energy tax, MET collection authority for the EDA Number 4 Fairchild. David Oka?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Board members. As you know, and we've been negotiating on the sale of the Fairchild Building. And the next two items, actually the next three items, address an incentive to the potential purchaser of this building. I would like to have Adam Long, our outside counsel, address these agreements. So we'll take them one at a time. Adam?
Good evening. I'm Adam Long, counsel for the Redevelopment Agency. As Mr. Oka introduced, the next three items on our Redevelopment Agency Board meeting deal with the sale of the Fairchild Building. The first two deal with a potential incentive to a company that plans on developing a data center in this building. First up, Resolution 206, which is what we were technically on, is an interlocal agreement between the agency and the city whereby the agency would be entitled to collect a portion of the city's municipal energy tax paid by the new owner of the Fairchild Building. And the participation agreement, which is the next item on the resolution, would pass that municipal energy tax through to the new owner as an incentive. What has been proposed is a 10-year agreement with the agency receiving 100% of municipal energy tax paid on this site for three years and receiving 50% for the next seven years. As far as interlocal agreement goes, that, those are the subsequent points. I'm happy to answer questions about that and/or the participation agreement.
Questions from the Board? Adam, I think we understand it. Thank you.
Okay. With Chair's permission, I'd like to address the participation agreement as well. This is essentially the counterpart to this interlocal agreement. The interlocal agreement allows the agency to receive a portion of municipal energy tax paid. The participation agreement sets forth the terms under which the owner of the building would receive that incentive. Really key here is that the new owner operated data center with a minimum capital investment amount and minimum job requirement amount. And it would mirror the terms of the interlocal agreement. So planning on a 10-year incentive, 100% of the municipal energy tax for three years, 50% for the next seven.
Any questions for Adam? Thanks.
Councilmember Nichols? Excuse me. Board Member Nichols?
This is going to come out as a question, but any issue, Melanie, if for a motion with both Resolutions 206 and 207 in one?
I don't see a problem. I would leave it up to legal. They were asking if they could make, approve both items, B and C, in one motion.
It would be helpful and for purposes of identifying if there is a challenge or a discussion to do them separately.
Okay. Very good. I move to approve Resolution 206.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member Nichols, a second by Board Member Jacob. Discussion of the motion? Let's vote.
Council, oh, Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member Newton?
Aye.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board Member Jacob?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
And Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Board Member Nichols?
I'll take that again. Move to approve Resolution 207.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member Nichols, a second by Board Member Anderson. Discussion of the motion? Let's vote.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board Member Newton?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member Jacob?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Item 2E, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution Number 208, authorizing the chair to execute a purchase and sale agreement between Aligned Energy and the Redevelopment Agency of the City of West Jordan. David Oka?
Yes. This has been a very hotly negotiated agreement. Even until 15 minutes ago, we were still negotiating some finer terms of this agreement. I'd like to turn the time over to Paul Dodd, since a lot of it was attorney to attorney and I got lost after about two minutes. So I'd like to turn it over to him for the explanation.
Mr. Dodd?
Paul, for the record, would you elaborate on the property and everything prior to giving us a definition, just so, for the record?
Yes, Chairman. This property is the old Fairchild Semiconductor Plant down on 9th South. We are looking to sell this property to Aligned. And I would, this is, this is dealing with the sale of the property. It is something if the Board would like, I think it would be appropriate to convene a short closed session to discuss some of the items, or we, I'm fine to do it here as well. I think it's, it would be up to the Board how they would want to proceed on that.
Do you believe these are closed session items?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
Do you believe these are closed session items that we?
There are some, there are some items in discussion as far as negotiations of the purchase of real estate that I do believe would, would be appropriate, but also if the Board would like to, to address all those items in the public meeting as well, we can do that.
Mayor, I can tell you that Paul and counsel that we've asked for outside assistance sat on the phone with the New York lawyers, the New Jersey lawyers, for over three and a half hours. They spit back options, they went back and forth. There is some risk that I prefer that you all hear and decide if you want to take on in a closed session before we decide one way or another. Ultimately, if that risk is too great, then you'll have to make that decision ultimately out here, obviously, in the public forum.
My question would be, would this be a long closed session or is just a few items we need to discuss and then could come right back out?
Yes, Chairman. That way it would just be a short closed session. We could discuss a few items and come back out.
Board Member Newton?
Can we, can we move this to the end of the meeting and so we don't hold up all the rest of the council meeting and come back into, to the RDA meeting at the end?
We would ask our counsel to stay from outside. Is there an objection to that? Do you have anywhere to be? All right. We're imposing on your time. Thank you.
Okay. So then a motion? Yes. We have a motion by Board Member Newton? And a second by Board Member McConaughey. Discussion of the motion? Let's vote.
And this is to move?
Motion is to?
Move it to the end of the meeting?
To move this to the end of the meetings.
Board Member Burton?
May I clarify? Are we going to do it at the end of council meeting or the end of our board meeting?
Council.
So we will reconvene our board meeting after the council meeting?
We have to.
And then we'll go back into another closed session after that again, I suppose, right?
That would be for council meeting, probably.
For council. Yes.
Okay. Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board Member Jacob?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Newton?
Aye.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Okay. I'll need a motion to move to the?
Recede.
Recede the redevelopment agency meeting and move to the Municipal Building Authority meeting of December 20th, 2017.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member McConaughey, a second by Board Member Nichols. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I call to order the Municipal Building Authority meeting. First item of business, approve the minutes of June 14th, 2017, as presented. Second. We have a motion by Board Member McConaughey, a second by Board Member Burton. Discussion? Let's vote.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Jacob?
Yes.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member Newton?
Aye.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Business item 2B, approve Resolution Number 95, approving the 2018 annual meeting schedule for the City of West Jordan Municipal Building Authority. Melanie?
The item is similar to the Redevelopment Agency, required by state law, state statute.
Board Member McConaughey?
Move to approve Resolution 95.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member McConaughey, a second by Board Member Burton. Discussion? Let's vote.
Board Member Newton?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Jacob?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
We need a motion to adjourn the Municipal Building Authority meeting and convene the Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District meeting. Board Member McConaughey?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member McConaughey, a second by Board Member Anderson. Discussion? Let's vote. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, we will call to order the Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District meeting. First item, approve the minutes of June 14th, 2017, as presented.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member Burton, a second by Board Member McConaughey. Discussion? Let's vote.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member Newton?
Aye.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board Member Jacob?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
This is item 2B, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 17-233, approving the 2018 annual meeting schedule for the West Jordan Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District. Melanie?
And again, required by state statute, same as the other two.
Board Member McConaughey?
Move to approve Resolution 17-233.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member McConaughey, a second by Board Member Burton. Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board Member Newton?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
And Board Member Jacob?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Motion will be required to adjourn the Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting of December 20th, 2017. Board Member McConaughey?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member McConaughey, a second by Board Member Burton. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I call to order the City Council meeting of December 20th, 2017. The first item I need to explain, the public hearing item on the agenda, 9C, has been pulled. As of this afternoon, we had some information that came in that will change that item. So it's been pulled and be heard at a later date. We now have recognition of outgoing mayor, oh, excuse me, excuse me, I jumped past it. We have the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. That will be led by our Fire Chief, Mark McElroy.
Thank you, Mayor. Would the audience please arrive? Join me in reporting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you very much, Chief, for that. Now we will have recognition of outgoing Mayor Kim Rolf, councilmembers Dave Newton and Chad Nichols for service on the City Council.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is David Bricky. I'm the interim City Manager. This presentation tonight is kind of fun and sad at the same time. I'm going to ask that the first part of it begin with Fire Chief Mark McElroy giving his presentation of badges and recognition for the service, and then we'll move into a different section. If I could also ask you gentlemen to step off of that just a little bit. All right. Thank you, David, for allowing the Fire Department some time to, it's been a tradition that started before I came on, but to give the outgoing elected officials a badge that represents their position on the City Council. And we've got that here, so I'd ask Mayor Rolf if he would come forward. Appreciate Mayor Rolf's support of the Fire Department, and I stand here to present this to you on behalf of the 85 firefighters. We truly support all that you have done your time as mayor, also as City Council. So now you've got matching badges, one for mayor and one for City Council. Thank you, sir. And now councilmember Chad Nichols. Councilmember Nichols has been here for eight years, all of which, he was on the council when I got appointed, so it's pretty special that I get to do this. Same thing, thank you for your support to the Fire Department, the mission that we do. We could have done it without your support. And on behalf of the 85 members of the Fire Department, myself, presenting you the Walling Badge. Thank you. Councilmember Newton? This one's a little different. This gentleman, young man, has already received a council member badge, an animator badge, so I had to come up with something else because he's got badge, badge, badge. So in April of 2015, we opened a public safety building. We rebuilt fire station number 54 and turned it into the Bagley Park Police Substation and a fire station. Councilmember Newton was probably on the council when this idea was first thought of. It took a few years due to recession and whatnot to, to actually become a reality. So instead of another badge for you to claim, I wanted to give you this coin set that represents the case that was built, the picture, and I've also got ball cap for you. And thank you for your support and everything. Thanks. So I don't play favorites. We'll just do it in reverse order. But we're going to start by recognizing something that is something unique in your background, in fact, that you've been not only a mayor, now a councilman, and coming back and helping hopefully institute the building along with these gentlemen of an art center that in a very short while, hopefully within the next year, year and a half, will be enjoying this time next year. But the recognition that we've asked the employees to actually put out a statement on the order of the sign or on the picture that sort of hopefully makes it a little more personal?
That's cool.
And recognizes, in this case, though, your term as a mayor, but also as a councilman. So the picture of the building, I suspect you'd rather have a different building here if you decided to do a regular building. But if I could give you that, I want to know if you want to say anything before I do it. Just, I love this city. I love the opportunity that I've had to serve here on, on these three different occasions. And wow, I'm going to miss the people. I'm going to miss being around and being, being a part of things, but fear not, I will be here mixing things up, so thank you. That we don't doubt. If I could ask Chad to step forward. Councilman Lamb has been one of the most passionate individuals.
Or Nickles, I'm sorry.
You're going to replace me right now if you want.
That's okay. He got the two Chads.
Yeah, I looked right at him. How many Chads we have in the room? Chad Nichols has been very passionate about his job. He's been committed to the city in a way that has been upside down. I can't even get that right. His commitment has extended not only to serving as a council member, but also working for the water issue, which means uncertainly, he literally starts at 3:00 in the afternoon and doesn't get home till midnight. His commitment has extended into having to travel back from his job to be here. He's helped the city designate and change our laws, so we do have in the future the ability to recognize the development that technology has provided us, allowing people who have to travel to be here. And I recognize you as being the individual that helped make that happen. The other individuals in the council helped vote for it, but it was because of your commitment to this community. So they've also signed the exterior, the picture, and is there anything else you'd like to say besides tell us all your name?
You're not, you're not used to being put on the spot like this all the time. It's all good. Yeah. I don't have a lot to say right now, but thank you very much. I had a couple comments I might bring up later. I had some notes up there that I just kind of jotted down, but for now, I just, for this, bittersweet. There've been trying times, the great eight years of my life. And it's, it's, the most exciting thing for the community is for individuals to stand up and get involved. That's what makes a difference. It's literally in this room, when people come and share their opinions, that our city changes. It really makes an impact. And it's not just the seven votes. That's just the deciding factor. It's all of the input that you get from city staff and from residents, from businesses that really makes the change. So thank you, everybody.
I think the mayor right this time if I could ask Mayor Rolf to step forward. I started at this city a very short period time ago, less than two years. I've had the good fortune of working in public service for 24 years. I am fortunate to work with a man whose passion probably equals mine when it comes to willingness to stand up and fight for what's right. Your mayor has been an individual that doesn't shirk responsibility and that hasn't walked away from the tough decisions. He's made some, even as I speak tonight, that are not fun, but he's not walked away from them. So it's also with some pride that I get to hand him a picture of the city hall along with those recognitions from city employees. Mine says, thanks for putting in the good fight. Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Thanks a lot. Public speaking is one of the fun things that I do. It's been my honor to serve for 12 years for the city, eight as a council member and four as the mayor. I love this city, always have, and I look forward to getting back to private life. My whole life, I've worked 60 to 70 hours, so it hasn't been any different these last four years, although I won't miss the 3:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m. calls. I won't miss them at all. The rest of it will be pretty much the same for me. And it's been, it's been wonderful working with many individuals that are really, truly professional in this city, and we have fought the good fight. Thank you very much.
The staff, if you just wanted, if they wanted to come up and have one big photo, it might be a fun opportunity because I don't know if they'll have us at the end of time. So if we had to get the staff and family, friends could come up if they want to take a picture with all of us. I mean, I called out, take pictures. So if you want to come up, let's do it. No, I got you. I got you now. Now, I know there's some family members out here, would you like to come up? One last time. I may not be a favorite person. This is a fun photo. Mel, you want to get in there?
Oh, I'm not part of the family. Oh, sorry, I was walking behind you.
Three, two, one. Thank you. I suppose there is one last acknowledgement. I'm, I'm going to confiscate your gavel, only so that we can put your name on it, date it for your service, and get it back to you so you have the one thing you can keep order with when you leave here. I know you have a little boy that might need some help at some point. Don't use it though. Don't use it though.
The tradition has always been that when a mayor finishes their term, and I'm sure Councilmember Newton has one also, that we frame their gavel that they've used for four years, which I think is kind of neat as a mayor. And then, as Mayor-elect writing begins his office, we will have a brand-new mallet, whatever you want to call him, for him to use, and then do the same. So, it's a nice reminder of being a mayor for the city.
We'll move to communications. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could take a little longer than usual, I'd like to acknowledge that this past week we had the Alton Thacker Tiny Tim Toy Foundation recognized by a national organization who broadcasts on TV and prepared and videotaped-recorded that recognition. That national TV show has asked us to keep their name quiet until February when they broadcast, but I would like to, in the meantime, because it just happened last week, to recognize those individuals who've helped in the community to help promote Alton's recognition. The individual businesses in the community that helped contribute by bringing coffee, included High Point Coffee. There was food that was provided by Dunford Bakers, Chick-fil-A of West Jordan and Taylorsville, Sam's Club, Nothing Bump Cakes, and Taffytown brought food in. There was over three hundred to close to four hundred individuals who all volunteered to come in. That included the Jordan School District's West Jordan High School, Copper Hills High School, Columbia Elementary, and Tara Lind Elementary. The West Jordan Chamber of Commerce helped to get donations and contributions of people sitting in the parade route and waving. The Salt Lake County Library, Vivian, or the Vividian Event Center opened up their facility for people to stand in and stay warm. That was on very short notice, so it was nice of the county to do that. Ultimately, this wouldn't have happened without the support of the staff. Parks and Events staff were absolutely phenomenal in putting this together in less than a week's notice. They had individuals participating, including, they somehow were able to get Santa to show up early. They had the help of police and fire. Public Works set aside some time and brought in some of the large equipment to be part of the parade route. Jared Smith and Joel Linares made sure we stayed out of trouble through legal and risk. GIS helped print banners that were, you'll see on the TV. Sean and Marine were terrific in creating graphics and video to help with the whole production. So, it's a rather long recognition, but it's an acknowledgement of what this city can do in a very short period of time, in less than a week. I guess the highlight for me was Councilman Newton's traveling around on his Segway and waving, throwing out frisbees. So, it is only because of how committed this community is, and the staff particularly was able to pull this off, and I want to acknowledge them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I should also indicate there, Alton, he brought cards to hand out as a thanking, so I'm going to leave them up here in the chair. If you have any small child or someone that you'd like to give cards or police vehicles, fire chief said that's the reason they give them away is because they have to sell fireworks to the people who have no home.
Yes, Mayor, I don't have anything besides to say. I'd like to thank the mayor and the outgoing councilmembers for the opportunity to work with you. It's been a real pleasure.
Thank you. Scott?
Mayor Rolf, Councilmember Newton, and Councilmember Nichols, we've worked together for many years. I just want to thank you for the careful attention that you've given to land use issues. Often, they're highly charged and challenging decisions that you've had to weigh in many times, and I, it was a pleasure to work with you, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. David Naylor?
He made my job easy. I'm just going to say ditto of what Scott said, but we appreciate all your support in parks and all our issues that we have brought to you and the support that you gave to us over the years. So, thank you. Nothing else tonight, Mayor.
Gil Piper?
I'd also like to say thanks to those that are outgoing. Appreciate your support and thanks again.
Bueno?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works is grateful for all the things that those who are leaving have done for the city and the support that you've showed for the efforts that Public Works does. We're especially grateful for the new building that we're in the process of constructing. I think that'll really benefit the community in the future. Thank you.
Chief McElreith?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have some, an update on, as you know, we sent seven firefighters and an engine to California to assist them in those wildfires. They returned safely today at two o'clock. They're home resting with their families. Some of them will return to work their normal shift on Friday or Saturday. I can report that they did, we got great feedback from California that all the seventy-two people from Utah that went, they were professional and represented their jurisdictions well and the state of Utah. And if I could, I would ask that, as you know, today's will be my last meeting, but I think in the January meeting, if Mr. Bricky would approve of that, that the crews that went there could come and share a ten-minute presentation with exactly what they did, and I think you would all be impressed with what they've done. So, that might be something to look forward to in January. Lastly, I ditto what the colleagues of mine have said, that thank you for all your service to all of you, since this will be my last meeting. I've enjoyed being here for seven years, front row seat to a lot of good times, some interesting times. And I'll leave you with, I wouldn't be here, I'm going to share something very short about Councilmember Newton, that nineteen ninety-nine, West Jordan was a public safety department. And we would not be a fire department today if Councilmember Newton and those that were on the council at that time had not seen the need to split that organization, not because the police department was bad, we get along great, but the service needed to be separated because there are so many specialties. And so, for that, I thank you, and so long.
Chief Diamond?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo the comments that have maybe four about those that are going out. Thank you for your support, in particular of the police department, but the city as a whole as well. I appreciate what you've been able to do and the increased numbers that we have. I think we're able to protect the city better, and I look forward to serving with the new council as well. With that note, we have four new officers that will be starting next week, that will be going to the academy. They'll be starting the academy on January second, and they will, once they complete the academy, will be on the street. We also have another officer that is experienced on, actually stolen from another city, and he will be starting on the eighth. So, we are still continuing to increase our staff and to fill those vacancies that we have and those extra slots that you allotted this year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to thank three of my colleagues up here and also Chief McElreith for your service in the thirteen months I've got to know you being up here. But I also just wanted to give my personal feelings for Mayor Rolf, Councilmember Nichols, and Councilmember Newton. And Mayor, I first met you when I worked at the Chamber of Commerce four years ago when you were running for mayor, and we chatted about your vision for the city, and I've not met many people that have a passion for a city as you have, and how strong you represent the citizens and the taxpayers of this city. I appreciate your friendship and the love that you have of West Jordan. It shows in your passion, and I just want to thank you for that publicly. Councilmember Nichols, I don't know how you do three midnight meetings as frequently as you do and work out of state. I'm glad that I was able to assist in helping you participate electronically so that you could fulfill your commitment to the residents, and appreciate your friendship and being able to talk to you and get kind of some good ideas on parameters. And Councilmember Newton, there is no question of your love of West Jordan City and your passion and desire for it to be better and to raise the bar, and really, all three of you have raised the bar. And I won't call it a regret. I do wish I could have served with you an extra year or more. Your friendship means a lot to me, and my time up here will be, with you, will be cherished. And I just want to thank all three of you for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
I feel bad now. I didn't make any notes. Gosh. I did want to express my appreciation to the fire department for the work they did in California. It was fun to follow along on social media and through emails. The work they did, very well done, and I appreciate the way they represented our city and our state as a group, and thanks for protecting my hometown. Appreciate that. And to these three, I just want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve with all three of you. It's been, it's been great to be able to see progress happen, and at times to disagree without being disagreeable. I think for the most part, we've all been able to vote, and once the vote's over, we can disagree and we can go down and shake hands when it's over. So, that's been very good, and thank you, especially Chad. I've got a better friendship with Chad just because we sit next to each other, and he was at my house when the election results came in, when I got this job, and it was just, we just had a very good, I'm going to miss my seatmate here. So, whoever, whichever one of y'all get this seat, I guess we'll be friends too. But thank you for your service, and don't be stranger.
Councilmember Nichols?
This is coming out like a eulogy tonight. I wasn't going to say anything about Chief McElreith because I wasn't sure he was, he'd made that public yet, even tonight when he was there. It was a little awkward, I'm like, does the chief know yet? The other chief, you know, like, ah, anyway, I guess it's public now. Chief McElreith, I recall distinctly with you that before, I was good to give that consent. Whenever we have a department head, city manager makes that choice. It's with the advice and consent of the council. And before I was willing to give that consent, I don't know why this is emotional, I took the time to go meet with Chief McElreith, and I'm sure he was wondering, what's this all about? But it was a great conversation. I got to know him, I had no questions about supporting him, being our fire chief. I really didn't want to do that. I had some other issues to talk about, but I wanted the council just to be made aware of one situation that happened with me personally today as far as a business issue. So, some of you know, I run a photography business on the side. I've been doing that in addition to everything else. And the BLM required me to have a, to issue a business license, and so I'm like, no problem, I'm going to go grab it, and I'm looking for it, and I couldn't find it. So, I, after about an hour and a half search, I gave up and I called the city, and I said, what, what happened? I just don't have it. Can I get another copy? And she said, stand by, I'll call you back. It was Marcia, very helpful today, and she called me back. She said, the reason why you don't have it is because we never sent you an invoice, you didn't pay for it this year. And so, I learned a couple things. Number one, just when we work through change of the city, we just need to remember to be patient. I, I mean, I was, she just explained to me, she didn't know who I was. She didn't know I was on the council. She just knew I was a business owner, and I was just needing some help with a home business. And so, she explained to me that we changed systems, and in the changing of that system, that somehow I wasn't sent any invoice. And I said, well, I need a license, so I'll happily pay, and that's what she said. She goes, you can do that, and she actually gave me the option at this point. She goes, at the end of the year, she goes, you want to pay, I mean, what do you want to do? And I said, you know what, just let me pay for the 2017 license. But there's a second issue that, why I'm bringing this up, and this is the important part for y'all, is the fact that the legislature changed the requirement that for home-based businesses that are small and significant, I don't know the legal jargon, but basically, it's not required now. And so, she was explaining this to me, that I don't need one in 2018. But this was the ramification, is the BLM requires me, in order to conduct commercial operations on BLM land, I'm required to have one. So, I'm grateful that the council made the decision to allow the business licenses to continue, but it's just an option, so I have to pay that forty-dollar fee to continue that. But I just wanted you to be aware of this, some of the ramifications of the decisions we make. It's just amazing how that just happens. A decision made by the legislature and a decision that we made as a body, and I didn't even realize it until I went looking for my business license. Anyway, just wanted to share that with you. I've already talked way too much, but I did want to take a minute, while we have an audience, to share a few things. First of all, I do not want to come across that these are my accomplishments. That's not at all the intent or goal here. It is our accomplishments as a city, and I wanted to share just, it's a list, I spent ten minutes, this is ten minutes literally, it's not an all-encompassing list, it's just a list of things that just came to my mind over ten minutes, of things that I wrote down that have changed in the city of West Jordan in the eight years while I've been up here. I may have been impactful on some of these, and some of them I may have had nothing to do with, they're just things that I've observed that we've changed as a city, and I thought that those who are here today might find it interesting. I started serving during the recession, which was an enjoyable time, kind of. It was a very difficult time as a city councilmember, but these are some of the things that have changed in these eight years. Our city, we've gone from no hotels to three. Boeing came to West Jordan. We completed Fifty-Six Hundred West between Seventieth and Seventy-Eight South. Seventy-Eight South itself has now four lanes out in the west half of the city that made a significant impact, and we know it's going to continue to grow as well and widen. Several gas stations, including the Holiday Oil on Bacchus Highway. For me, that was a huge victory to get a gas station out on the west side of the city. We got the Maverick at Highlands now out there. We've got two gas stations to brag about. Smith's on Seventy-Eight South. Who can't complain about In-N-Out Burger and Cafe Rio? Those were two big victories, right, in our town? The Vividian Center was built. We acquired the old library for the West Jordan Culture Arts Center. Culture Arts Center is, we've had the groundbreaking, we're moving forward. Tracks came to West Jordan. Gardner Village, the indoor soccer arena. Jordan Valley Water Conservancy, the garden park has expanded significantly. We had the open space bond funds. They were approved before, but we got to watch several things come to fruition, like Bateman Pond, Oaks East Park, Maple Hills Park, Wildfaw Park, Bridle Creek Park. The list just goes on. I have all this list of parks, all these things that just came about. The Miracle Field at Veterans Memorial Park. We also had the four community-built playgrounds, four of them in this van. The Ron Wood Park Expansion, the Splash Pad. I heard so much about the Splash Pad and how exciting that was to have that in the city. The Jordan River Trail was completed. We had the introduction of a lot of private schools, including Hawthorne Academy, and the OSI expansion, if we all remember the OSI expansion, it was right in the depths of the recession, yet we were able to pull out a victory. However minor it is, to me, that was significant. The Cap'n Grade came about, and Jordan Valley Station for Tracks, and some legislative victories that we had, the airport board seat that we now have, the Salt Lake International Airport, the Seven Eight Hundred South Overpass that's now in our city, and we moved the pedestrian bridge out to Bacchus Highway. Significant progress now on Seventieth and Ninety South on Bangator, and then the great big one, Mountain View Corridor. And this is, I came up with this list literally in ten minutes. I just typed as fast as they came to my head. I'm sure I could come up with a list that's much grander. We, as a city, should be proud of what we are, what we've become. I'm grateful to have been a part of it, however small. But thank you all very much. I know the relationships will continue, but it's so nice to have residents, city staff, and even businesses that are just so supportive and so willing to get involved. Very grateful to have that experience. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Newton?
I've been here in this city since nineteen seventy-four, so forty-three years. There was five thousand people in the city when I-
Uh, there was 5,000 people in the city when I moved in. Uh, a little bit different now. What a great city this is and, uh, we will soon be the third largest city in this state. And I look forward to, to our new council and mayor, uh, moving forward and continuing the growth that we've had here. So thank you, all of you, for the opportunity that I've had to serve and, and my wife's not gonna move, so I'm not gonna go anywhere. Thanks.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank Chief McElreith for the work and he's done as the fire chief here in West Jordan. If we look at West Jordan's fire department and compare them to any others, we're head and shoulders above other fire departments. So thank you for getting us where we are. And also, thank you for acknowledging our firefighters that went up to California, those that came back well and safe. And then thank you for making it a department that we can do things like that and help other people, not only neighbors here in West Jordan, or in Utah, I should say, but also those in other states. And then as for our outgoing council members, Councilmember Nichols, Councilmember Newton, it's been a pleasure working with you. Councilmember Nichols, I got to know you when you were, first got on the council. I'd come and watch you and try and guess what your votes were going to be. Sometimes I was right, often I was wrong. And thank you for taking the time to coach me when I first got on the council and give me some direction. It's been very helpful and I appreciate the friendship we created during that time. And Councilmember Newton, I got to know you back when, I remember you first became the mayor. I didn't know you as council member, sorry. But I did know you as mayor and I was impressed and pleased with the work you did then. I've been impressed and pleased with the work you did as a council member here. So thank you for taking a little time out of your retirement and, and helping the city of West Jordan. The few months you did made a difference here. And then Mayor Rolf, it's been a pleasure serving with you. I got to know you when you were first on the council and you used to work with the Chamber of Commerce back then and I used to work with you. Got to like, learn to like you and your, your stance back then, but working with you as mayor, it just amazed me how many times I would be talking with you, you'd be talking with me and you'd share your view and I think, well, that's my view. So often, we would have the same view on things and so we'd go try to accomplish and make West Jordan a better place. And I appreciate what you've done and you have made a difference in West Jordan. And West Jordan will be forever better because of the work you have done as a council member and particularly as a mayor. So thank each of you for your service here in West Jordan.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to, uh, David Oka, who probably thought his retirement could slip under the radar. Uh, for so many years, economic development has been at the top of our list of goals and our objectives. And, uh, he and his team have been quietly working in the background, trying to bring, uh, some very big things to fruition. You heard a little bit about Boeing just a few minutes ago. You heard about, uh, the Fairchild development, uh, earlier in today's meeting. There are a lot of other accomplishments that can go there. So I wanted to say thank you, uh, for the work that you've done before you, before you slipped out into retirement. Thank you.
I hope this, myself and my family, we absolutely love you. The kindness that you've shown me and my family personally, uh, the way you have treated us and that, I don't know. I feel like when I'm with the fire department, I feel like I'm with family. I feel like much of that comes from you and the tone that's been set by the leadership. And if we've had the fire department visit our home on less than ideal circumstances, um, everybody has been very, very quick to make us feel at ease, make us feel comfortable, they treat us like family. Much of that comes from you. I know you and I have had, um, and, and there, there have been a couple of experiences that you and I have shared. And I just want to say thank you for the kindness that, uh, you've shown me and for the career that you've dedicated to the city. You've done a fantastic job caring for our fire department, growing our fire department, making sure we have good people who are there. And I have no doubt that, um, quite a few of them, um, are, are qualified and able to fill the, the hole that you're going to leave in our city. I, I don't want to diminish what you've done, but you've, you've helped, I, I, I'm not sure quite how to articulate the thought process, but, um, you'll be greatly missed. But by you stepping out, you've cultivated so many people who can help step in. The city's not going to feel anything negative, um, by, by your departure, by your retirement, but I hope you feel an immense amount of pride, looking back and seeing how well you've set up the city and the fire department for success. Professionally, personally, I, I, I give you all my thanks and love. Thank you, Chief. I'm the council. Um, and, and I'm going through an order of, um, time that I've spent working with, with each of you. Mayor Rolf, I came into the city council into the vacancy that, uh, that you had left and those were some big shoes to fill. I've learned an immense amount over, over the time that we've served together. You've helped me see things from a perspective that I had not seen or understood before. You've given me opportunities to learn, to stretch. You showed, uh, much about leadership and gave me opportunities to step in and lead. There's so many things that, uh, when, when people think of the role of the mayor, they think what they see in the news or what they, the little soundbites that they get from council meeting, they think that's all there is to it. I've had the opportunity to sit in for Mayor Rolf at some of these regional meetings and I've had a, a glimpse of how big that role really is and the weight that sits on those shoulders. It is very taxing on whoever's in that seat and on their family. And I would also ask that you express our appreciation to your good wife. Um, she has sacrificed significantly to allow you to serve the city and the city is far better for that. And I think, um, I, I, I don't think people understand the impact that this has on families. Thank you. I am a much better person for having served with you and the example and the things that I've, I've been taught. Chad, um, wow, six years we've worked together and, uh, uh, again, every conversation we have, I, I come away learning a little bit more. Um, Councilmember Nichols is one that you can talk with for hours and hours and hours and then not realize that your phone is about to die. Um, we've, the conversations we've had, um, I'll call up with something with a, a question about a specific item on the agenda, but then the conversation turns in, not just tactics, but it turns into strategy. And it's, well, let's not just look at this in terms of that little area, let's look at this in terms of the whole city and the whole valley. When we're talking about, uh, growth and development, Chad has had this vision that has, uh, been by, by far, um, the best planning mind on the council, um, the vision for where we're at and where we're, where we could be. And then the talent to figure out the strategy of what do we need to do to get there. And then he's always one who does his homework. He'll go through and take the time to read everything he can, not just what's in the packet from staff, but compare this to state law. You heard him talk a little bit about issues with, uh, the BLM requiring licenses. He's spent countless hours going through city codes, seeing how does this compare to what state code says? Where do we have to make adjustments? He has set the, set the model for how a council member should study things out, how they should ask questions, and the view that we should take as we, as we deliberate and make decisions from this dais. I could go on for quite a bit longer, but, um, there's so many things I've learned. Thank you for the experience. Thank you for sharing. Thank you for the time and dedication you've given and thank you for your friendship. And then Councilmember Newton, it's hard to call you council member. Dave, so I've known, Dave has known me longer than I've known him. Um, he's, we've lived just down the street. My family lived just down the street from him and as long as I can remember, I've known Dave Newton. He's, he's basically family to my family. He was there in, as I was growing up, in scouts as one of my, uh, one of, he was my scout master. He taught me the value of, the value of work, the value of community. Um, as he went on from that and served in the community, he led by example and showed how you give to your community, how to get involved. It's very much because of Dave that I am here today. I, I really have a hard time saying much more because you are so near and dear to our family. But again, I just want to say, Dave, I, I love you. Thank you for all you've done, for all you've given, for coming back to do it again, even knowing full well what you were getting into and the, the stresses and the time commitment and everything that comes along with this. Thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Since we've got a long agenda tonight, uh, I will be as brief as possible. Um, I would, uh, since this is the last meeting with David Oka and tenants, uh, I met you in your office and told you, uh, how wonderful it was working with you after 11-year absence of not having an economic development director or an economic development team. It was wonderful to have you onboard. Uh, we worked hard, uh, we had some successes and some failures and, uh, and it's been wonderful and I wish you the best in your retirement. I really truly do. And I told you that in your office a few weeks ago. Chief McElreith, I'd like everyone to know that when, I found out a, a few weeks ahead of the rest of the council, uh, myself and our city manager, uh, met with Chief McElreith in the, the city manager's office and I want everyone to know, I begged him. And I don't beg nobody for anything, but I begged him to stay. Done a magnificent job and your shoes are gonna be hard to feel. But again, I wish you well in life. I really do. Um, it's been, uh, a great experience working with the council and I appreciate everyone. Uh, I realize that, um, in my world, there's only black and white, there's no gray area and that's sometimes hard to swallow for some people, but that's just, uh, and I appreciate, uh, especially this council. We could just disagree, but we always were never disagreeable. After the vote came down, we all jumped in and supported it and it's been like a vacation so, for me, compared to the first part of the, so I, I, I must thank you all for, for that. It's been just wonderful this last couple of years. Thanks a lot.
Mayor, can I be the last?
Please.
Um, I've had the pleasure of working with all three of you, um, through your entire service. I'm thinking back when I was a deputy city clerk and began working with Councilmember Newton and he was appointed to fill a position then and then became the city clerk in 2000 and have had the privilege of working with all three of you. Um, with Mayor Newton, you were elected in 2007, like, six?
Six.
Five, five. So you started in six.
Five, yeah.
And then working with you for the four years as a mayor and what a privilege it was and the things that I've learned from you, from Councilmember Nu, uh, Nichols. I still remember the night, uh, when you were running for council in 2009 when you and Councilmember Kilpak, when you were running for election, came to my home. And it has been tremendous. We have learned so much about each other, I believe, and have come to really appreciate each other. Mayor Rolf, previous council member, um, when you first came in in 2003 to declare and I'd heard you were coming in, I'm going, well, I've heard about this gentleman, but I don't know. So it was a privilege to work with you for the eight years as a council member and then the last four years as the mayor. I, I feel like I'm very privileged because I get to work with all of you a lot. And so I just want to express my appreciation to each of you for, one, for putting up with me, two, for listening to me sitting in my office, um, and three, just, you know, for being there for me and for helping me learn a lot about myself. I'm just, I wanted to find just something to end with. It says, a politician should have three hats. One for throwing into the ring, one for talking through, and one for pulling rabbits out of it if elected. So you've done very well in pulling those rabbits out when they were needed and I welcome the new, um, council and mayor-elect to do the same. I just want to express my appreciation to the three of you.
Thank you. We'll move now to citizens' comments. Uh, I have two signed up to speak this evening. We'll start with them. As a reminder, you'll be allowed three minutes to speak on the topic of your decision. Robert Dean?
Um, I'm a senior at Western High School and I am just here on behalf of the open spaces of West Jordan. Um, so we have a lot of open space in West Jordan and, um, only a small portion of that is actually maintained by the city. About, um, six, not, points, 1.69% is actually maintained by the city from what I saw on the, um, Parks and Rec website. And, um, I'd just like to see that developed into more city managed open spaces or parks. And so, um, I also conducted a survey to see what people would like open space to be developed into and I have three of the biggest, um, things that people would like to see done with their open space. And, um, the top one were trails going through undeveloped open space or undeveloped land. Um, and then that was followed closely by a park with playground and lastly with a grassy filled with picnic facilities. So West Jordan does have a lot of open spaces, I've already said, and I'm sure the city owns a lot more than what is actually managed by the city. And I would just like to push for that to be developed into city managed open space or parks and, um, even the purchase of more open space. And so also in the survey, I asked how the people would like to finance the purchase of more open space. So, um, there were several options, but the top three were, um, I actually, one of the options was no figure, the three options were, um, raise taxes, um, a bond or no figure something else out with an open option that people could suggest their own. So the top one was no figure something else out. You may have guessed, but, um, but it was followed closely, well, it wasn't followed closely, but behind it was taxes, raise the taxes, and the third one was bond. So, um, I do have a solution and that is to purchase the open space now. And as the quality of life in West Jordan improves as the open spaces are developed, then you can get that money through sales tax and property tax. And although the solution may not be very predictable or reliable, there is still the bond option and many others. So that's, that's something that I guess could be explored. And I think that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you very much. Dan Ritchie?
My name is Dan Ritchie. I'm here on behalf of Ship Central Fulfillment, a business here in West Jordan. And we established roots here in West Jordan this year and moved into a facility and our agreement with the landlord was to pay all the utilities for the building. And as time went on, uh, we received a water bill and part of the water bill was for a commercial storm drain fee. And the property that we're on, 60% of the property is developed and 40% of the property is undeveloped. The way that the city has the fee currently set up right now is based on total acreage, which the property we're on right now is 15.44 acres. So roughly eight acres and change is developed and 6.7 acres is undeveloped. So roughly eight acres and change is developed and 6.7 acres is undeveloped. And as a struggling small business owner trying to grow my roots and be around for the long term, it's really discouraging to pay almost $5,000 extra dollars over the course of a year on commercial storm drain on raw land that doesn't have any drains. I've worked with Steve Glein from the planning department and zoning and he says I'm one of 200 complaints or so regarding this matter and you guys are in the process of changing the rules or the ordinance so that the fees only apply to developed land. And so he says to me that you guys are in the process of changing that, which I'm really grateful and support. So I'm trying to bring this to everyone's attention and let you know where I'm coming from as a small business owner here.
Mayor, can we get his address?
We have it now. He's signed up, so we have everything. We'll see if we can reach out to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's all that have signed up to speak tonight. Anyone else wishing to speak on any item that isn't a public hearing? We have two public hearings still on the agenda that we'll have later in the meeting, but if you're here for any other topic, now would be the opportunity to speak for three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Steve Jones, 3234 West 6927. You know, it's really interesting, kind of looking back as these terms are coming to an end and we're seeing retirements and I think of my time here in the city, which is roughly 33 years. I actually came to my very first city council meeting when the fire department was looking at separating. And I remember back in those days when we would train firefighters and then we would lose those firefighters to the county after a very short period of time. And I was glad to see that we stopped becoming a training ground for the agencies around us. And I would hope, because I see the same thing happening now with Salt Lake City, they've announced that they're going to hire 50 new police officers and I see kind of the same thing potentially happening, that a big shift is going to happen because they're not available at this time. So I would hope that our council would take the time to kind of review that. But in retrospect, I acknowledge our mayor. I directly hold him responsible for my neighborhood not being flooded anymore. Thirty years that that was flooding with numerous, I know my neighbors came to numerous mayors and was never reconciled, but yet in a very short period of time, he met with us, open arms, and for that I am truly grateful. He truly held an open door, not seen by many, I think. Also, I've watched the last couple of meetings and even though he's outgoing, he's not become a lame duck and that just says something about his integrity. So thank you, Mayor Ralph. Chad Nichols, I've actually gotten to know him pretty well, had a lot of conversations with him on different issues. I actually consider him a friend now. We've had a lot of, but you know, it's really kind of hard to say that in some ways because there's not one council member up there now that I don't feel comfortable going to and talking about an issue. We may not agree, but we still can talk about it. And so finally, to Chief McReith, I am greatly appreciated as a citizen for his fire department and what he does. We are truly losing somebody that we can't afford to lose as far as I'm concerned as a citizen. I've had many interactions with our fire department over the years, mostly on a medical, and they've always been professional and I lay that at the leadership.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comments? I will close the citizens' comments portion of the agenda and we'll move to the consent calendar. I've been asked to pull item C from the consent. No one else is?
B, please.
Item B as well. Any others? Councilmember McConaughey?
Move to approve all items except B as in Bravo, C as in Charlie.
Second. We have a motion by councilmember McConaughey, a second by councilmember Nichols. Discussion of the motion. See you none, let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Ralph?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Let's move to consent item B, approved Resolution 17-237, setting the 2018 annual meeting schedule for the City Council Planning and Zoning Commission and other city boards and committees.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have no problem with the dates on there, however, we are missing a couple of dates for the strategic planning and I would like to suggest the same suggestion I made last year for our strategic planning and that would be to hold them on two separate Fridays, one week apart. The first one with the council that just meets together with the city manager and attorney and a couple of us like that to discuss the things that we like to see have happen in our following year. And then the following week with the staff who would be involved in making some of those things, offering suggestions on ways we can make those things happen, may have two or three different ideas, suggestions on making it happen on the following week. So I would recommend doing that on the January 5th and 12th, but I'd like to hear from the other four council members who that directly affects.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Personally, I like the format we had last time where we just had it on the one day. I thought that worked well. Second, I would like to wait to set the dates until we've got the new council members who are able to chime in on that. I know we had the tentative agenda, go out for the January 10th meeting and discussion on possible action regarding the strategic planning sessions, one of those items. So I would propose we hold off on really any deliberation on dates until we're able to include them in that conversation. So, thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
Just wanted to agree with what councilmember McConaughey just said. We need three extra bodies up here to make the call on the strategic planning session and as such, I'll just move to approve Resolution 17-237.
Second. We have a motion by councilmember Jacob and a second by councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. See you none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Ralph?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
And councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Consent item C, approve Resolution 17-238, confirming the appointment of members to the planning commission and various city committees. Councilmember Newton?
Thank you, man. The resolution, the resolution we have before us appoints the committees, there were two blank names before this evening. As we met this evening with those that desired to be members of the planning commission, we had the opportunity to interview and choose two new members for the planning commission. Let me just say before I announce those names that every one of these individuals who applied here are worthy to be on the planning commission and I would hope that those of you who weren't chosen will stay involved and we have other committees that you could be involved with. One is the general plan committee, which is involved in planning as well. But thank you for your interest, thank you for your time, thank you for being a part of the city of West Jordan. We appreciate that. That being said, those that have been chosen by this council to serve on the planning commission are Matt Quinney and Corbin England. So thank you to, again, to all of you who applied and thank you to those two. They don't know what they're getting in for, but we appreciate you anyway. With that...
I'm sorry, Mayor, I hate to interrupt. We need to acknowledge at least the alternate so that if there is an inability...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot about that. And the alternate is Liz Oliphant. So if for some reason the other two have a problem, Liz would take the place there. Does that cover me? No? Thank you. With that, then let me make motion to approve Resolution 17-238.
Second. Second. Do we need to name in the, in the motion? Do we need to name the...
I think you just made the statement with those names.
Okay, so you just added state, okay. So we have a motion by councilmember Newton and a second by councilmember Nichols. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. Just real briefly, I want to echo what councilmember Newton has just stated. All seven names on that list, wonderful people, every single one of them, it's like, wow, this is a great group. So the planning commission is just one facet of the city. The general plan committee, as you mentioned, is a fabulous way to be involved with the planning commission. It's an exhaustive program that really makes a difference. Please get involved, put your name there. And even on this very item tonight, it's not just planning commission, we've got the events committee and design review committee, we've got appointments to various committees tonight in this very motion. So just please get involved, just because this one didn't work out at this time, please continue in something else, just to see if there's something else that would interest you. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo what councilmember Nichols said. There's a lot of opportunity for service and sharing insights and giving support to the city through some of the other committees that are out there. The resolution that we have tonight before us includes not just the planning commission, but some of those other committees. In fact, one of them, I want to call it specifically because this is a last-minute addition to the list, section six on the resolution, you'll notice there's a paper copy in front of you, this includes Dallin Anderson to be appointed on the Parks and Open Lands Committee. His name was not included on the online version that was in the packet. There are a number of other committees that are out there, Sustainability Committee, the youth theater, there's the arts council, a lot of places where residents have an opportunity to get engaged and help set the tone for the direction of the city. So planning commission is just one of about a dozen. So, thank you, Mayor.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Ralph?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Item 9A, a public hearing item, receive public input and consider for approval, Resolution 17-247, amending the City of West Jordan General Fund, Capital Support Fund, Building Capital Fund, Water Fund, Sewer Fund, Stormwater Fund, and Fleet Fund budgets for the fiscal year 2017, 2018. Bill Piper?
Thanks, Mayor. Tonight, we have Eric Oklin, our budget officer, here to address this item.
Okay, as we occasionally do, we have some items that need to be addressed to amend the budget, things that have happened since the original budget has been adopted. And I think the best thing to do is, as usual, you have the information and descriptions in your packet if you have any questions about any of those.
Questions for Eric? Looks like you're off the hook. Thanks. I will now open the public hearing for item 9A. Anyone in the public wishing to address this item now is the opportunity. See you none, I will close the public hearing and return to the council for discussion Councilmember Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we approve Resolution 17-247.
We have a motion by councilmember Newton and a second by councilmember Nichols. Discussion of the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Ralph?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Item 9B, public hearing item, receive public input and consider for approval, Ordinance 17-66, authorizing the mayor to execute a right-of-way vacation for the construction of the West Jordan Cultural Arts Center located at approximately 1925 West, 7800 South, City of West Jordan applicant. Scott?
Thanks, Mayor. This is a housekeeping item. This is an old right-of-way easement recorded back in 1956. We don't need it. It would be going through the proposed cultural arts center, the parking lot and part of the clipping part of that building. So state law requires us to hold a public hearing to authorize that vacation, so happy to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Questions from council? See you none. We'll open the public hearing for item 9B. If you're here to speak on this item, now is the opportunity. I'll close the public hearing for item 9B and return to the council. Councilmember Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we approve Ordinance 17-66.
Second. We have a motion by councilmember Newton and a second by councilmember Anderson. Discussion of the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Mayor Ralph?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Business item 10A, discussion and possible action regarding city council action, November 21st, 2017, authorizing a payment to Ralph and Christine Mendel for flooding in their home. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Burton and I spoke a little bit about this and I believe the intention is to make a motion that would lift the time restriction for this particular claim and then direct staff to evaluate the claim and if necessary, well, follow the procedure that's been outlined with the exception of that timeframe restriction being lifted.
I'll take that as a motion and I'll second it.
It was your item, so I wanted to make the motion.
So that's my motion.
We have a motion by councilmember Burton, I'll second, and a second by councilmember Anderson. Anderson. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Anderson?
I just wanted to let the council know that I have talked with Ralph Mendel and his wife, and this is an acceptable course for them, and I think this is a wiser course. So, I'm going to be in support of this.
The motion doesn't allow for what was decided a few weeks ago to move forward on the ten thousand dollars immediately and then revisit the secondary issue?
It does not. It provides them an avenue to use the fund that we have put together so they can apply for the flooding issues that they've had. The reason they were not able to apply was due to the time constraints, so we removed the time constraints totally from there, and they can apply, go through the normal channels, and be able to accommodate their needs in that way.
Let's vote.
Mayor Ralph?
No.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Vote passes six to one in favor.
Business item ten B, discussion and possible discussion, presentation and possible action regarding sewer rates. Duncan?
Mayor?
Yes. My understanding is that...
If I may before the presentation?
Hold one second, Duncan.
Given the conversations with the council and based on the hour, unless there's a desire to hear the presentation, I would make a motion that we rescind the automatic sewer rate increase that occurred effective July twenty seventeen.
Councilmember Burton?
I will second that motion.
So we have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Burton, discussion to the motion. David Rikki?
During your discussion, it would be helpful to indicate to the staff when that rescission was to be effective. So are we talking about from this month, next month? Let's avoid some of the confusion that came about previously, and tell us exactly what it is that the date is to be effective up by.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would clarify that that motion would include a timeframe wherein bills that are mailed out starting in January would revert to the rates as they existed prior to the July increase.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second that added motion.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Ralph?
Yes.
The vote passes six to one in favor.
I'm sorry, Duncan, you came prepared and...
That's all right. I was just starting to say, it was my understanding that the mayor of Rosemont was going to make a motion, so...
Went quick. Thank you very much for being prepared, we appreciate it, Duncan.
I was going to stay here for the next item.
Okay. Item ten C, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution seventeen dash two forty-eight, adopting a policy for recording and live-streaming city meetings and events. Duncan?
Yes, so this is at least a first draft, that's a resolution, if you feel like it's in final form, you could pass it this evening, if you feel like there's changes, this would be a good time to give me some direction on how you'd like to change it. My understanding is, is that there's been some interest from many of you on the council to have a policy to livestream city council meetings in particular, and possibly other city meetings or city events. The technology, obviously, as you know, is already in place. A policy is always advisable, however, just to make sure that you're all on the same page, that we know the procedures to uniformly livestream, and also the ability to have someone make a determination if there's meetings other than regular city council meetings that you'd like to have livestreams, and what manner that would occur. So I tried to keep that simple, and I think I accomplished something really good here, where as an attorney, I kept it really to a half a page for that main part, section one. You know, I could have spent, you know, two or three times as much space easily, but I kept it short, so there's just A, B, C, D, E there. Basically, you can see that the real meat of it is the Intellectual Property Permission Notice that I've included there. This language is, I can't claim total credit for, I looked at places like Monaville Communications, the LDS Church, the other local governmental entities, the language they use, but when video is, when copyright protection is being claimed, and also when we're giving notice to people that attend events, that if they attend, they do recognize and give consent by their attendance, that they might be part of that broadcast, and that broadcast could be used, and just gives people that fair notice. And the way it would be configured is it would be on either an agenda, or a program, or some other official notice, and if possible, we would also post it on the door, or a sign at an event, just to give people that notice. So, with that in mind, oh, I guess the last thing I was going to say is I picked in this instance the city manager to be the individual to authorize other meetings or city events to be livestreamed. If there's a different mechanism, obviously, that could easily be reworded. So, with those comments in mind, do you have any questions for me, or any direction on any changes that you would like to make?
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. On my side, no changes of directions necessarily, but I would like to have a longer conversation about this and some of the different items in here. Specifically, there's a few lines in the Intellectual Property Permission Notice that I'm concerned with. That said, when we previously discussed this, I thought we'd given direction that we wanted this agendized for the strategic planning meeting, so I would be in favor of not necessarily approving or denying, but rather tabling the conversation until the strategic planning session, when we can have longer conversations about this.
That would be my opinion as well, since there'll be new members of the council that will be affected by this, I think it would be a great thing for them to weigh in on their idea on this. Councilmember Burton?
With that in mind, I'll just limit it down to one question that I still have, if I could, Mr. Duncan? The question on the Intellectual Property part is what I have, if this is livestreamed, would somebody have to have written permission before they could take an excerpt out of context and post it on social media?
Yes, yeah, that's the intent of the current language, is if they're going to distribute it in any way, and that would be a form of distribution, or if they were going to manipulate or modify, which, taking pieces without the whole, then yes, they would need written permission from the city manager the way that this is currently written.
So would we need an enforcement included into this somehow, or how would that be enforced?
That's probably something that we could continue to think through, but there's no specific remedy, obviously, listed here, it'd be whatever remedies currently exist.
David has a comment?
Sure, the most obvious would be an immediate letter to the entity saying cease and desist, we don't have authorization. If it was an educational piece, something was on YouTube, we'd obviously try to work with someone to say, you know, you have to put it in context, but those are something we can certainly work out, but it would be something equivalent to, remember Craig Kleiman, who used to work for our city, Craig now works for an entity that is constantly watching the web to see if people are damaging his client's image, and it's something that is consistently keeping him occupied. So if, once you start streaming and someone starts to use that image, don't be surprised if there's a green sheet asking for some more help to defend the city's image.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and ask my second question, I'll quit. Would there be a way for someone to opt out, if they are coming to a public meeting and they don't want to be recorded, could they opt out of that recording in some fashion?
The way it's currently written, no, so that, I mean, there's an A or B, but not C. They can either attend the meeting and give consent, or not attend the meeting and not give consent, but there's no option C, so to speak, which is to attend the meeting and not give consent, the way it's currently written.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is more logistical, and we have camera over by Melanie, and we have two cameras up there, but we don't have a camera on the screen, and I don't know that we want to get into a production-type element, but there might be some better alignment of cameras so that as we're streaming, people can see what we're talking about.
Right. So I have discussions along these lines with our IT Director, Mike Oliver, there are a total of four available cameras, they can be reconfigured so that different angles or views are possible. The easiest way is to set views and then to leave them there, you know, other ones at the audience, ones at the screen, as you say, one towards the council deus or podium, those kinds of things. So, that doesn't require much adjustment at all, as long as you keep those fixed during the meeting. What gets, what does require someone's attention, which could be, you know, any staff person here, is if you want to, during the process of the meeting, change those views. But if you're talking about keeping the same views for the entire meeting, they could easily be changed for that whole meeting. The other, let's see, and the other issue along those lines is that there is already the capability, as indicated in this proposed policy, to have automatically generated closed captioning. So, the only problem with our technology there is it doesn't always immediately come into play with the live-streaming, but by the time it's recorded, a few hours later, the closed caption is a hundred percent complete, so... And we do have a way to store without any charge to the city pretty much as much video as we want on YouTube, so...
Paul, did you have a comment?
Yes, just to the point as far as showing the screen, it's my understanding, I might be incorrect, but maybe Councilmember Nichols could address this, but I think that the, even though the camera's on the screen, that the screen itself goes through the feed and you can see it through the live stream, so it is visible to them without the actual camera showing it.
That's right, we don't actually, I'm glad you remembered that, Mike Oliver did tell me that, that that doesn't need to be one of our four cameras, that can just be an automatic feed, so...
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor, I was going to echo what Mr. Dodd already added, and you can go back, we do have a couple earlier that were recorded, so you can go online and see some of the older recordings right after the system was installed, and you can see exactly what was up on the screen. I move to table this item until the strategic planning session.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion of the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Ralph?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Sorry. Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah.
The vote passes six to one in favor.
Business item ten D, discussion and possible action regarding design of and budget for the West Jordan Cultural Arts Center. David, would you like to take this?
Maybe. Sure, I'll take it. It's come to our attention that the architects and Oakland Construction have been working together to come up with a price, and the price they've come up with was a few cents under ten million dollars, I don't know why they didn't say just ten million dollars, but it's ten million, that's where it's at. So I guess the question before this council is whether or not to approve spending up to ten million dollars for that Cultural Arts Center.
We were at nine-three before?
We were at nine-two.
Nine-two.
Correct. And some of that included adding in the LED rather than incandescent bolts, thank you, which is going to save us money in the long run, that was really a no-brainer, but there's some other things that additions in there, and let me just say this, I, most of you know that I really want this to happen, and I would rather see us cut some things out, if necessary, in that, to get something started that we could finish later, rather than not do it at all, so I would encourage us to do whatever to make it happen. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. And to clarify, if I read the email right, that gave us, hey, here's the updated prices, that changed from nine-point-two to ten, I believe that did not include the nine-foot something expansion of the lobby, and it does not include finishes to the multipurpose room, those finishes are anticipated to cost an additional, I want to say, five-hundred or six-hundred thousand, is that?
Did mine include the...
That was my understanding. Going back to the email that came over, it sounded like, here's the ten-million-dollar price tag, but some of those things were going to become optional add-ons later, like an option to extend ten, nine, or nine-foot-three, which is basically ten-foot, and I thought they had said this ten-million-dollar price tag also excludes the finishings of the multipurpose room.
That's not my understanding. My understanding, they were directed that that was an absolute, and I think the other three items were the questionable items.
Okay. It was an oddly worded email that came across, so I may have misunderstood that. If that wasn't the case, I was going to suggest ten-five, but if we only need the ten, then I would wholeheartedly support the ten.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. I was on a similar question, I want to make sure it includes the expansion of the lobby, the expansion on the restrooms, and I saw that did include the LED lights, I think it'd be very backwards to not have LED lights to start with, so I just want to make sure it includes those three items in there.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I am confused as to how we set budgets. Don't we get the price from the architect first, decide nine-point-two million's going to give us everything we want, and then we turn around and it's not nine-point-two million anymore, it's ten million, oh, and by the way, it doesn't include everything you wanted the first time, and now it includes some other stuff. I'm a little bit confused on how budgets work. Who set the price at nine-point-two million? We didn't just make that number up, an architect or somebody gave us...
We set the price at eight million.
Right.
When we awarded the contracts.
Exactly, and then it got to nine-point-two, and now it's going to ten, and before it's done, it's going to be fifteen or sixteen, if it follows the same path the recenter went down. I'm tired of budget creep. I'm on projects like this, if...
Actually, we have the plans now, so they can actually put...
Dollar amounts.
Budget numbers, and Oakland has put the budget number, and that's what has come out. I will state that moving to begin in eighteen is costing twenty-five percent increase on film materials, concrete, all those things should have been started in November, in my opinion.
Yeah, I'm just really tired of budgets being set, budgets being amended, and then budgets being changed, and then budgets being increased on every building that we try to build. So I'm not in favor of allocating ten million, I would much rather say to the architect or to the contractors or to whoever's billing us, do it for the price that we started with, and don't tell me you can't, because you gave us that price. So, and we didn't make that number up, that number came from somebody else, so that's my two cents, if you'll pardon the pun.
And I would agree with that, other than we had no plan when we started, zero plan, we just had an idea to build one, and... And once you get a plan that can actually have quantities and do those things, then the contractor can give a price. So I support building. We have a funding source. We have identified where that funding sources are coming from, from various sources. This does not increase anyone's taxes. So I would support up to 10 million, and I would hold it at that. Councilmember Burton? No, excuse me. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor.
Just for the benefit of everyone here, is there, can we run down the revenue streams that we have thus far? And then we're working on sponsorships and such. But is there, can we just, because my understanding was we had about 8 million that's coming in towards the 10, if I remember correctly. And so we've got, we've got some money set aside for this.
Yeah, I'll allow Councilmember Newton to tell you exactly where the revenue stream that we've identified is.
Okay, thank you.
I would have brought that with me if I'd known we were going there.
Perfect. There's the list.
There we go. 4.3 million from the Bowler property, which was supposed to close today, but it's been put off till next week.
Till the 29th, yes.
Till the 29th. 1.3 million from the Sycamore property. Hopefully, 1 million from the Fairchild sale. A million from the old library. A million from the county. And possibly, and this would, what I heard Zach about that property up by the maples, that maybe part of that could possibly develop a million, provided they still got their park there, okay? And you know more about that than I do. So that comes up to 9.6 million.
Councilmember Anderson?
It's like jeopardy up here.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I just, I appreciate that. And I truly understand what Councilmember Jacob is saying, that I don't like budget creep either. However, when we've identified the money and now we have plans, you know, you kind of said ago, we're looking for an art center. It's about eight, we want to put about 8 million into it. You get an architect, start drawing the plans. You get those finalized, and it comes up. But it sounds like if all those things fall into place, which they should, that we would have the funds for a $10 million arts facility. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
I would just like to state that we do have in place a fundraiser. There'll be naming rights. There's several other that I believe, in my opinion, will exceed $2 million, ways for businesses to participate in this. So as Councilmember McConaughey stated, I believe all those items that are add-ons will be able to be completed. Because if all the funding comes in the way it's been scheduled, plus another couple million bucks, in my opinion, we'll be able to get all the bells and whistles with it, so. But we need to make sure we have the base there without any donations at this point, so. Councilmember Newton?
Yeah, move that we approve up to $10 million for the art center.
Second? Have a motion by Councilmember Newton, and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be clear that even though I'll be voting against the motion, it's purely because of the budget creep and the tendency that projects like this have to grow beyond their britches. So I, whereas I very much support the arts, I very much support the art center going in, I would just like to see it built for what we kind of quoted the first time. Thanks.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate what Councilmember Jacob added. I would also point out that concern about inflation on the cost is why the council, when this project was originally approved, gave specific direction. Well, even in the bidding process with the architect, we made it clear that we wanted to do this in two phases so that we could be started as soon as November. That was very clear in the RFPs that went out. It was clear in the conversations. Somewhere along the lines, different direction from staff was given to the architect, and they're told to wait. So that undoubtedly has some planet, because now stuff is being priced out at 2018 rates instead of 2017. We did give a specific direction as we authorized this project, and that did not happen. So just want to add that background. I know the mayor alluded to it. I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you, Mayor.
And we were very specific on those directions right from the start, so. Councilmember Anderson?
I'm sorry to ask the question. And this I want to give to Mr. Bricky. So Councilmember McConaughey noted that the council gave direction to begin the art center in 2017, in November of 2017. And there was an alternative direction from staff, if I'm understanding, to do it a little bit later. Where's the disconnect coming between a council direction? And is there feedback that doesn't come back to us? That's my question.
I think as the architects began to move in and design what was at 8 million, my understanding, the improvements went to 9.2, but then this most recent was additional costs for expanding and clarifying what those improvements, or not improvements, but additions included. Clarifying the type of shell, clarifying whether we had 44 lines for curtains and dropping in the future. We've reduced it to an amount, a number, that achieves what I think the committee that has been sitting down and meeting with the architects could accomplish. And that's ended up at 9.997.
Okay, and my question is more the process of council setting a direction, and then something else happens that delays things. And I don't know, maybe Councilmember McConaughey's got some comments, but it's not so much the pricing as much as direction and conflicting things. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a very specific answer to your questions of when and how that direction was given, but it would not be appropriate to share it here.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes 6 to 1 in favor.
Okay. We'll need a motion to suspend city council meeting and return to the redevelopment agency meeting for item 2E. And then we will need to, for a closed session to discuss real estate specifically. And then we'll need to resume the final part of the redevelopment agency meeting in public after that closed session. So I would like to take a brief five-minute break. I hope the motion will state this, and then move to a closed session for the redevelopment agency meeting. And then we will return back to here for the public part of the final, for the redevelopment agency meeting. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we recess the city council meeting, and after a short time, reconvene the redevelopment agency meeting in closed session for the purpose of discussing real estate.
Councilmember Burton?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?